And the councilmember LaBange will be joining us very shortly. And with that, I am joined by our colleague, Mr. Gil Sadio, and we will start this meeting. Mr. Lid.
Item number one, motion, Blumenfeld, O'Farrell, relative to instructing the Department of Recreation and Parks, Department of General Services, and Bureau of Engineering to evaluate the cost effectiveness and feasibility using drought tolerant landscaping and low maintenance alternatives whenever the city requires, renovates, or re-landscapes city property, including drought tolerant landscaping and low maintenance alternatives in city landscaping projects whenever cost effective.
And, Mr. Lid, I would like to take items one and two together. Would it be appropriate to read item two as well?
I'll do that. Item number two is a motion, Blumenfeld, O'Farrell, relative to instructing the Department of Recreation and Parks to include energy and water-saving strategies in the construction and maintenance of recreation parks facilities, including parking lots, and further including energy and water-saving elements when cost effective.
Thank you. And that being said, fellows, if you don't mind, I'm going to go ahead and have staff from our colleague Bob Blumenfeld, come up, Mr. Cesar Diaz, to speak on behalf of the councilmember.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Cesar Diaz. I'm with Councilmember Bob Blumenfeld's office. Councilmembers LaBange and Sadio, thank you for having our office and allowing us to speak here today on this item. On behalf of Councilmember Bob Blumenfeld, we appreciate you taking the time to hear this in committee. The councilmember has a mission to green the valley, but is also concerned for the city as a whole. It seems to be natural for a city to look at ways to create cost efficiencies in water usage, especially during this drought. One of those ways is to start installing drought tolerant landscaping at all our city facilities, whenever the cost efficient means is necessary. As I understand, Recan Parks is here to report, and we look forward to working with them on this mission. The library department, which uses Prop and funds to pay Recan Parks to maintain the facilities, is the reason why, which we also have Recan Parks here to report on that, and because typically they're coordinating with other departments for that kind of work. I know from our staff working with the general manager of the library department that they are on board with moving in this direction at their facilities as well. In fact, in collaboration with Recan Parks, Department of Water and Power, and the library, we are altering our landscape at our district office in Reseda from a lawn to a drought tolerant landscaping. This cooperation between our council and various departments is essential to achieving this goal. Councilmember Blumenfeld would like to see this plan implemented throughout the city if possible. For the parks, it's a more obvious direction. We're not just talking about watering, taking away soccer fields or anything like that. We are just talking about redoing the landscaping around the facility that is not being used for programming. Rather, it can be used regarding classes and other opportunities as well. Again, thank you, Mr. Chair and councilmembers, for your time today. Councilmember Blumenfeld hopes you will support this motion and by sending it to the commission for approval before it goes to the council. In regards to the second motion, just a quick note on that as well, from the councilmember. This motion is similar to the theme that we had just mentioned. As we are first to renovate and build a new recreation parking facilities, it is essential that we look at all aspects of the park, the facility and surrounding areas such as parking lots, to contribute to the lead standards. Right now, beautiful facilities being built in our district, the Woolen Hills Recreation Center. We look forward to seeing permeable or other previous parking lots installed at the recreation facilities throughout the city, using materials that will generate more runoff in appropriate standards and not just into our drainage system. I know that the engineers of BOE and landscape architects for Recan Parks will see this happen in many different projects that come up through the city. And as such, this motion, we are glad to work with your office, Mr. Chair, and Recan Parks General Manager, Michael Scholl, to get it right. I think we have an opportunity here that the city is moving forward with these recommendations, and also that we lead by example. So, thank you again for your time, and I appreciate anything else.
Thank you for coming and reporting, Mr. Diaz. And our best to our colleague, Mr. Blumenfeld. Thank you. And, Mr. Scholl?
Thank you, Mike Scholl, General Manager, Recreation and Parks. Joined to my right here, Tom Gibson, he's our lead landscape architect, and Ramon Baraja, Assistant General Manager, whoever sees all of the maintenance operations for Recreation and Parks. First off, to Councilmember Blumenfeld's comments, I mean, we cannot, in any degree, agree more than what, you know, these motions have set forth. We take a great deal of pride in what we've been able to do in Recan Parks, and it is in our best interest to reduce our water use and power use throughout the city, since we do pay our own utility bills these days. So, we take this very, very seriously. I'm going to ask Tom to go through some of our water conservation measures, and then I'll talk a little bit about the water retention and partnerships that we have with sanitation and DWP and others, and then Ramon will give a few comments on maintenance, just to kind of show the whole gamut of all the things that we're doing. So, go ahead, Tom.
Tom Gibson, Landscape Architect, Department of Recreation and Parks. RAP really focused its water conservation program starting in 2006 while working with then-Councilman Garcetti, and specifically with Mitch O'Farrell, at Barnes Dahl Park's Hollyhock Turf Reduction and Smart Irrigation Project. It proved to be a very successful project, and out of that, an MOU between RAP and DWP was created to improve and update irrigation infrastructure in city parks. To date, RAP has retrofitted 16 parks with this MOU program, and five more projects are in progress. This program, along with RAP's many other water conserving efforts, have resulted in RAP reducing its potable water use by 39% in fiscal year 1213 when compared to the baseline fiscal year '06-'07 as set by DWP. This equates to approximately 2.4 billion gallons of water. The department has far surpassed the 30% water reduction goal it was asked to achieve by the city's water conserving measures. Education of RAP staff was the first order of business so that staff understood the need to change old work habits and the importance of conserving our water resources. This in itself created a sea change within the department, and nowadays, RAP staff are huge advocates for water conservation. RAP's Water Conservation Plan. While LADWP was working on the city's drought ordinance, RAP instituted the Department of Recreation and Parks Strategic Water Conservation Plan to help guide department staff and park designers to manage parks and design parks to maximize water conservation. In order to comply with the ordinance, RAP implemented stringent water policies that included, but were not limited to irrigation systems, staff training, reducing potable water use, increasing the use of recycled water, and implementing sustainable design practices for all future park projects. Recycled water. Conversion of parks and golf courses to using recycled water has been important in reducing RAP's water use. RAP's goal is to convert as many of the city's large parks, lakes, and golf courses to recycled water, as can be reached by recycled water pipelines provided by DWP. Working with DWP, RAP has converted six golf courses over half of the Sepulveda Basin, which includes Woodley Park, Balboa Park, Milenson Park, Lake Balboa, and entrance to Valley Regional Headquarters. Many of the irrigated areas of Griffith Park now utilize recycled water, and more areas of the park are being planned to do so. New recycled water irrigation systems recently installed were recently installed at Los Villas Golf Course and Betty Davis Picnic Area, and those will be hooked up soon to recycle water. Eleven additional sizable parks now use recycled water, and Elysian Park's massive irrigation system is now in design to receive recycled water. Already, RAP's recycling water program has resulted in 918 million gallons of potable water saved, which is six and a half times the amount of recycled water RAP used in fiscal year '06-'07. Turf Reduction. Another important way to reduce water use and decrease maintenance is to convert turf sports fields to synthetic materials. RAP has increased its inventory of synthetic sports fields to 22 fields, saving 21.2 million gallons of potable water a year. This is equivalent to the amount of water used by 130 single-family homes in one year. Adding to this, three more synthetic fields are in construction, and 10 more are in design. And in designing new parks, minimal turf areas are created to satisfy park users' needs. In redesigning existing parks, RAP strives to reduce turf areas by 25 to 30% or more when possible. Converting turf areas to organic mulch wood areas and/or areas of native plants and other low-water-use plants can save as much as 3.33 acre-feet of water per acre of land per year. Inorganic mulches, such as decomposed granite, pebbles, gravel, stone, and pavers can also replace turf areas and are used to reduce erosion, improve groundwater infiltration, and add variety to the aesthetics of parks. They can also be used for pathways and in parking areas. Using mulches in combination with proper grading of the site is a prime way to create bioswales and retain water within park boundaries. Also, RAP continues to divert over 90% of its green waste from landfills and recycle this material into mulch. Irrigation Infrastructure and Smart Irrigation. All new park irrigation systems are designed to be smart irrigation systems, and as funding becomes available, existing parks are being changed into smart irrigation systems. A smart system utilizes an irrigation controller that is capable of measuring available plant moisture in order to operate an irrigation system, replenishing water as needed while minimizing excessive water use. Climate-based irrigation controllers use a variety of climate and site conditions such as temperature, wind, and rainfall, while soil moisture controllers rely solely on the amount of moisture in the soil to determine when to use water. To date, RAP has upgraded over 600 of its 870 old controllers to new smart controllers. As technology improves, RAP also updates its irrigation equipment specifications, such as requiring rain sensors, better flow meters, more efficient sprinkler heads and nozzles, and stronger pipe fittings to help reduce pipe failure pressure points that can cause breaks in the irrigation system and water leaks. High-efficiency plumbing fixtures. As funding permits, staff installs water-efficient flush valves, water-saving toilets, and in some facilities, urinals using as little as 1/8 of a gallon of water per flush. Staff regularly performs inspections to correct water leaks at urinals, toilets, sinks, drinking fountains, and showers. Landscape Irrigation Crews. To enable the department to make a difference in regards to water conservations, staff landscape irrigation crews were formed to specialize in the construction of water conserving landscapes throughout the park system. These teams successfully installed all of the projects created by the RAP, DWP, MOU funds, as well as many other funded projects. These crews also supervise the department's smart irrigation youth participants. Over 100 youth, age 18 to 24, have gone through RAP's program to train youth in the landscaping and irrigation trades, helping to ensure a new generation knowledgeable about sustainable landscape practices. Moving forward, RAP is dedicated to continue to decrease water usage. For example, by turning off all irrigation for 16 days during the major storm event that passed through Los Angeles last month, RAP was able to save over 87 million gallons of water, equivalent to the amount of water that 534 single-family homes use in one year. So, RAP continues to look for ways to improve our parks, to conserve more, and to increase sustainability. RAP is now looking at improving its landscapes with increased emphasis on soil testing, ground aeration, and increased planting and proper tree placement. Our partners, RAP has long partnered with LADWP and Public Works on Conservation, Sustainable Design Projects, and has begun regularly scheduled meetings to make sure that coordination on park projects only improves in the future.
I'm not sure I have much to add to that.
Pretty comprehensive.
It's pretty comprehensive. And maybe we'll just allow you to answer, allow you to give us some questions so we don't take up too much more time. I would just say that, because one of the motions talked about parking lots, in that most of what happens in the park system these days is mostly governed, and throughout the city, is governed by the city's low-impact development ordinance as to the amount of rainfall that you're supposed to retain. In the park system, generally speaking, we try to retain 100% of stormwater, especially on any new park that's being built. A little bit more difficult on some of the older parks, but when we're redoing parking lots, things like that. The best and most efficient way, and the least expensive, is to direct the water towards landscaped areas. You don't need fancy parking materials to do any of that. You just need to direct the flow in the proper areas where you can have a certain amount of standing water for an amount of time to allow it to kind of permeate into the soil. That's the best way. Not always able to do that, but where we can, we try to do that. And if we can't, then we create underground retention areas. Most of our soccer fields that are built these days, synthetic ones, have what we call large dry wells. They're essentially underground, filled with gravel and large pipes where they act as a reservoir to hold the water. So, virtually all that water eventually makes it into the groundwater system. You are limited, in some areas of the city, as to the permeability rate of that soil, like a clay is obviously a little bit more difficult to deal with because it doesn't tend to want to soak in the water. But there's lots of ways around that. We generally design them to have overflows if they can't hold the water. But pretty much everything that's designed these days basically hits these two motions on the head, you know, as closely as we can. And then, you know, Ramon is, you know, you may have questions on maintenance, but I think we'll...
I just thought, Ramon Baraja, I just wanted to add that, you know, we have constant training, every, we have our tailgate safety meetings, and we cover this topic constantly, monthly, almost monthly, to make sure that all the employees know that, you know, our goal is to conserve water. We also train our employees to use different tools, such as water brooms, water restricting nozzles, and pressure washing instead of using the hoses. So, we're committed to this, and, you know, the other thing that we do is maintenance, planning, and BOE, and all, everybody that brings a project into Recan Parks, all the employees from different areas sit, and they go over the project to make sure that everything's being covered and that we're meeting, you know, the goals, and that employees are well aware of what's going to be developed and how it's going to be developed, in case they have any input.
Wonderful.
And I failed to mention also, councilmembers, that of the partnerships that we have with Bureau of Sanitation, Bureau of Engineering, as well as Department of Water and Power, which Tom talked about, but many of the Prop O projects that are being built are being done on Recan Parks property, Echo Park Lake in your district, and many others in other parts of the district. But some of those projects are actually going to hold the stormwater that's coming from city streets and clean that water, and eventually, we'll be able to use that water for irrigation. So, there's a lot happening that's a little bit more difficult to do, obviously, but we're kind of covering it in every facet, any facet we can, and any of the partners that we have. Prop O has been a very strong partner, though, in this whole endeavor to do that.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the reports. Couple of questions. Mike, you mentioned, you mentioned, basically, making sure water can drain where it's needed from the surface parking lots or other, you know, parks. We have an advantage in Los Angeles in that we're hilly, right? So, do you feel that Recan Parks is exploring every possibility in terms of design, in terms of just gravity? With parking lots in relation to elevation changes within a park, there's a lot we can work with in a lot of our parks in relation to gravity.
Absolutely, and it is probably the most effective way to do it. You know, the less we have to rely on, you know, different materials in parking lots that may have maintenance issues, and the more we can rely on just our natural landscape to take the water, we're much better off, because there's very little maintenance involved with that. If we can tolerate some areas being wet in the park for a small amount of time, then, you know, we should be doing that.
Bioswales.
Bioswales.
Big sense.
Yeah, I'm real big on, you know, especially in parking lots, if we can divert water to a swale, and then slowly take it to a catchment area, that that's a much more effective way of... And then it also accomplishes something else that was mentioned in the motion. When you do things like that, you can then also plant the trees and things within those bioswales that help with the heat island effects and all this, and you start to get a little, you know, a lot more multiple benefits.
And this is something, I wanted to ask this just because it's so topical right now, so I don't want to catch you all off guard, but in terms of Elysian Park, Elysian Park is of great interest to all of us, and particular interest to Gil Sadio and myself, and that is, the design is currently underway for a new irrigation system, which has been about 100 years in the making. So, this is great news. But ballpark on, in terms of, about how much, we know water is wasted there every day. We know that. What kind of savings do you envision there, once we are able to get the gray water and recycled water across the river and where it needs to be, and the system is in place? What kind of savings do you imagine we'll have there? Am I catching you too off guard?
No, water power does carry an estimate, especially on the, we do have it, I just don't have it at our fingertips right here in this moment.
But when you report back, maybe you could bring that information. It might be very informational.
Certainly.
But, because then you're talking about a scale that is less abstract for all of us to understand.
Yeah, and if I may add to this, since, you know, there is some, there is confusion in the city on the use of recycled water. I mean, even if we have a park within, we're using recycled water, we still can act like it's potable water. And the reason why it is, is because we're charged the same rate, whether it's potable or reclaimed water. So, it's not cheaper for us. It's the same, we pay the same rate. And our electric and water bill together are about $18 million a year.
Interesting.
So, and it's about 50/50, give or take, you know, but, so, we conserve, we try to conserve, I mean, recycled water is good because it's not coming out of the, you know, from the potable water systems. But for us, on a financial, you know, we still try to economize that as well.
And so, we talk about the 87 million gallons of water saved during the rain event because we simply turned off the irrigation systems.
Yeah.
What kind of financial savings was that?
We have it.
Yeah, it's close to $200,000.
Yeah, about $200,000.
$200,000? That's significant.
Yeah. You know, and it's, a lot of times, it's not technology, and it's not fancy, it's the easy stuff. And that's what we would say to the public, is that, you know, and I had different, you know, from different people around the city, it's like, I can't figure out my controller, and I just said, just unplug it.
Yeah.
You know, so, you know, I mean, unfortunately, I have to reset it, but if, you know, it's, I find most of the public, at least like my neighborhood and neighbors, that they just don't understand their controller. And sometimes they're very old, but you can save a lot of water.
Controllers.
The controllers.
Sensors are old.
Yeah.
If he changes her from aging, he'd be obsessed.
No, no, no. Mechanical piece of equipment. But, yeah, no, it's just the easy, it's the easy stuff. Ramon actually spearheaded that for us with our maintenance staff.
Well done.
And started about, you know, two days in advance. I mean, it took us a long time to get around to turn off all this, but it was worth it.
But imagine in rainy years, say next year, we have adequate rainfall, we could be saving into the millions of dollars.
You could conceivably, right.
And if the everyday constituent realizes that that can translate into tree trimming and street resurfacing, and longer hours, et cetera, et cetera, then we're talking about something that is very real to everyone.
Absolutely.
So, that's wonderful and commendable. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. And colleagues, Mr. Sadio.
So, we didn't do that before?
No, we always have. The, we've always, we've always, most of our, understand, most of our systems are, almost most of them are automated. We had to take them off, when the city would trans, when we went into, I don't know, Tom, it's 2007, when the city enacted its own kind of water restrictions, which we're still under, we actually had to turn those systems off from their automation to control the amount of water use. So, since then, we have been turning them off during rain events. But prior to that, they were automated. It's kind of...
I'm sorry, it's also, so it's a, not a real savings in terms of budget, it's just...
It should be. No, it should be. I mean, for us, it is. I mean, if we're planning on spending $18 million a year, and it translates to that, it should be a direct savings to us going forward and paying our bill.
Why would you plan on spending it if you, I mean, wouldn't you budget for some, some days in which you anticipate rain?
Well, we budget, we budget according to what we think we're going to use. I mean, and that's how we do it. Now, this year's been tough because there hasn't been, I'm sure our water use is probably, you know, more, higher up than down, right? So, some years it's going to be higher, and some years it's going to be lower. But there is no case where we're not planning on trying to reduce that number, but it's a budget. You know, it's what we average over a certain amount of years. I mean, we can get, we get those numbers from Water and Power, so we know what it is.
Right. So, that should, that should flow into what your expectations are, so you wouldn't like budget for more and then say, well, but it rains, and we save this amount. I mean, you'd be anticipating that.
Not, I'm not sure I understand. We're not, wouldn't be anticipating, the reason why we...
Isn't there a set number in setting your budget? Isn't there a set number of days that you anticipate that it's going to rain?
We don't budget, I mean, we budget to what we believe our consumption will be, and usually, we average it over a number of years, and we use that number consistently. We don't try to estimate how many days it's going to rain and then estimate our savings. Reason why we're making such a big deal about this particular one, it's not that we don't do it all the time, it's just that, you know, we haven't had any rain. So, yeah, so, we're just highlighting the fact that, you know, sometimes, it's just an easy thing to do. I'm not highlighting it because it's new, I'm highlighting it because we haven't had any rain. And that's the reason. I don't mean to make this out to be like this some genius thing we just thought up of. It's not. We've been doing it for years. It's just that we're making it a little bit more, a bigger of a deal now because we haven't had any rain.
Would you do me a favor? I get you guys to work with BOE and DWP to study strategies, buy the same thing over MacArthur Park.
Absolutely. In fact, we've already engaged those folks on MacArthur Park, but yes, we do need to do something about that lake and the irrigation systems around it.
Yep. The lake and everything, all parts of it. Could I add an amendment to that?
Yes, before you do, I think Mr. Baraja had something to add.
I was just going to, I was going to say the same thing our general manager said. We haven't had rain for a long time. It seems like the last three, four years, we had minimal rain, so, you know, taking advantage of these situations is kind of like, it's not something we reinvented, but it's something that, you know, we're just kind of proud of because of the lack of the rain.
In a remarkable year where it's so dry, it really, this number just jumps out at you, right?
Correct. And then, you know, and also with the new technology, you know, we have better communication, you know. You know, I've known, we've had emails and, for a while, but now we have smartphones where we're able to communicate with employees and get the orders out, you know, much quicker than we used to do it in the past. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Mr. LaBange?
Yeah, basically, the park system used to have water systems that were on the water of the park mains. And in the 1991 fire in Griffith Park above the Marigold Round, I was going north on Spring Street, ready to pull in a Nick's Cafe, but saw the loom up and said, I'm going to the fire. When I got to the fire behind the Marigold Round, I went to Engine 56, which is our local station, and I talked to the acting captain, Isaac Burks, who some of you know, and he said, we can't get any water. And I did not realize, and I thought I was a smart guy, that there was these two different systems. So, then, with a lobbying effort under the direction of the late, great John Farrell, they created the system in Griffith Park, which is on the DWP main, which, seven years ago, in the horrific 1,200-acre fire, that water and an engine through the front door with a hose line into every house on Shannon Road prevented all but one house, Chow's House, to get torched. No one was injured, except there was a lot of wildlife lost and a lot of vegetation, which is coming back tremendously. It's taken a long time, gentlemen, but there's no question, Elysian Park needs to be on the city main. And, and working with Water and Power, and it, and even previous, it's hard to believe because I've been around a little. It was over, in last century, that we did the Los Angeles Greenbelt Project, which goes from Glendale, Los Angeles Plant, near the Central Service Yard, upstream for not all, but much of Griffith Park on the northern half, and then goes to Forest Lawn and Mount Sinai and Universal for industrial uses. And that was last century. Now, the next one, there is a plan to get reclaimed water up to Vista del Valle, then over to Roosevelt, but only stop at Roosevelt, where I'm thinking, why doesn't it go from Roosevelt to Vermont and Hillhurst? Some people want to get rid of all green. You can get rid of all green on Reseda at the City Hall, West Valley City Hall, but in those parkways, they do need, they do need water. I don't think you could even maintain. The nice thing, too, in this is, is this a term that you use, not with pride, but you mow and blow? Is that a nice term? How do you describe it, Ramon?
Mow and blow is, when you mow, you edge your turf and you, you know, so...
You don't have the time to manicure it, but you mow it and blow it and clean it up and go it, because you've got a bunch of stuff to do. Mow, blow, and go it, I guess is what you want to call it. So, consequently, there needs to be an aggressive plan. And the amendment I'd make to Mr. Sadio was, they include Lafayette Park, which is just a few blocks away, in a large acre park. And maybe it would be nice, Mr. Chairman, if you could look at your big parks, obviously, Sepulveda Basin with the beauty of the Tillman Plant there, right, all connected, and we've got to get the East Valley Water Reclamation Plant back going, pumping to the East Valley. Look at these large areas. The key for MacArthur Park will be what brings the water to it, because it's somewhat isolated. Elysian Park is on the river, and the river conduit, there's a Pollock Well, which is at Fletcher. Some of these things could be used. I would just say, and I don't know of a sharper new general manager than Michael Scholl, but maybe if we ask as a committee, informally, what Mr. Sadio suggested, that Water and Power, General Service, Recan Parks, have a very strong, like, every six months, report back on your progress, because water is the key. And Michael, you wanted to say something?
Just that, yeah, I mean, to the point of getting recycled water, I mean, there's, we embrace every chance we get to get recycled water there, but really, Water and Power needs to be part of, they're the ones that actually run those main lines.
and Power needs to be part of, they're the ones that actually run those main lines.
Right.
So if we were going to get that type of water to like a MacArthur Park, we need to include Water and Power in the discussion. Certainly, we can do that, but certainly, the city council has a better, you know, chance of, you know, that, that happening in the end.
Right.
But they need to be, they need to be at the, they have a plan for where they're running the recycled water, and the Councilman of Labusch is absolutely right.
And I also think, too, before there were computers, everything got done. And the, and I was at Water and Power in the heyday of the energy shortage. The guy at PG&E would, at Marl Bay would say, we're going to have number three and four out, and he'd call the guy at East Valley Water and Power, this is simplistic, but he'd ask for 500 megawatts or whatever the proper request was a day, whatever it was, and they'd write it in pencil and they'd trade it, and it would happen. Once everything became by number, because power is gone today, you can't store it like in a reservoir. So it's gone today. What you generate today, you use today. So I, I just think if there's a way we can try to lift the burden off our libraries and park departments that serve the public with a limited dollar, somehow transfer that cost in some magical way, Mr. Garcetti. I say that because he's a magical guy. And it to say, because the water, the water, whether it comes, it's here. And whether it comes through a pipe, it's here. And so much, in the last few years, the big city main line, river supply conduit went through Griffith Park. If it was Edison or a private line, there would be a franchise fee, because we're city agencies. And Water and Power does do a lot for us. I'm not complaining. I love Water and Power. I do really do, and I think there's a lot of good things. But we've got to find a mechanism for us to be able to stretch the recreation dollar and the library dollar, and see what can be done, and see what our comps are. Maybe the CLA could see what the comps are for the water bill for the county of Los Angeles. Is there in water districts, different, you know, what they, what do they do? What if they don't get charged because the county says, we don't want to pay? And, and the water district's going to be, I don't know, I just thought of that right now. But that's a legitimate question, to see how you could do that. And also, one thing, I never criticize a great engineer, an architect, but rap is music. Recreation and Parks is the life of the city. So when you said rap in your report 19 times, I thought of my son, because he listens to rap music, and I say, come on, now, Recreation and Parks. Because when I first was chairman, they used to call Tibbetts, you ever hear what Tibbetts is? Tibbetts is Tom Bradley International Airport. And I did that old, uh, who was the senator from Texas? Who said to Dan Quill, I knew John Kennedy, you ain't know John Kennedy?
Benson, right.
What was his name?
Benson.
Benson, I did the Benson. It ain't Tibbetts. If you're going to come to this committee, you say Tom Bradley International Airport. You say Recreation and Parks, because that is a glory to the city. It's the people's property, and there's people out there enjoying it. Just a thought. So no criticism. I hope I get my next job approved by you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. This is good, but I think it's so important.
I think so, too. So what I'd like to recommend is, vis a vis the, the two council motions and the objective of, of exploring water conservation and water-saving strategies, to work with the mover of, of the motions, Bob Lewinfield's office, and report back, but also report back on efficiencies at MacArthur Park and the, with the DWP issue in relation to the water source, as well as Elysian Park, the savings potential, and, and then I'll add Lafayette Park as well.
Lafayette with MacArthur.
Yeah, Lafayette with MacArthur. Perfect, the guesses are so closely related. And then, and then we'll, you'll come and report back, and then, and we'll go from there on, on next steps.
Can I just throw this out, only because when I mentioned Mount Sinai, Forest Lawn?
Did you want to add to this?
Yeah, yeah.
Question?
You've got Elysian Park, you have the Dodger Stadium property, you have the Fire Academy, which, because water's so sacred, they used to take water from hydrants and train. Now they don't train as much, and add the State Park as far as, that gives DWP an, an answer or an ability to stretch it a little bit more because you have all these facilities. So if you just look at those, because they're all in the same vicinity where that is, that's all in the same corridor where you could find the reclaim. They get the main to you, then you have it, you come down the river. So that's my only suggestion to add to that.
To add the Rio?
Add the, uh, uh, Rio State Park, the Court Fields.
It is.
It's on the Court, is the Dodger Stadium on there?
No.
We should add Dodger Stadium, you know?
Well, we have, we have a lot we're reporting back on, as it is.
But if the main's there, they could connect.